This is the Mendon Select Board and we'll call the meeting to order at 5:37. First on the list is to add or delete items to the agenda. And we do have two things to add. One is regarding the recreation committee as far as bidding on the playground projects. Did I say that right, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay, and who will be doing that? And also, can we put that down at D under business? The recreation. And we want to talk about a hiring committee for our vacancies for the the road commissioner.
Three roads.
Yeah, three road, the road crew positions. So that, the hiring committee, we would put down as business E. And that is all I have. Is there anything else anyone needs to add?
I don't have anything.
I do not have anything.
Okay. And announcements, are there any announcements?
So Val, could we just do a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda adding recreation as business D and the hiring committee as business E. On favor?
I second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And back to announcements?
I have none.
I don't have any announcements. Okay, number four administrative matters, we'll sign the orders. And we all received these ahead of time. Everybody have a chance to. So I make a motion to approve the orders for 32823 in the amount of $9,548.53 and payroll for 423 for $10,154.30.
I second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Take a moment and sign these. We have Rich Carlson here. And WCAX TB is also here. And moving on, administrative matters, B, the minutes. Again, we were able to read these before the meeting. Any adjustments to the minutes from 32723?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes for 32723?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have the 2023, 2024 goals and objectives to review and develop the development under C. I think our number one, it's a slow process. There's a lot, it's a, it's a large list. I think our number one goal is to hire our employees and that's going to take time. That's why we added it to the agenda. We have a couple grants going out this week.
So do we want to get some kind of like for the employee hiring thing that it is?
I think that's our priority.
So employee hiring and the med cards?
Yes, the medical cards have to, that has to come first.
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
I have sent Sarah, Sarah, are you there?
Yes.
I sent Sarah a referral of a potential candidate for Iowa work. Sarah, have you had an opportunity to contact them and what was the outcome?
So I have not contacted them yet because the select board is still establishing the finalized job descriptions as well as the procedure in which we're going to hire. So I do have that contact number from you and I will make sure that they're aware that the job has been posted and speak with them when we're, when we get ready to do so. But there's a number of procedural things that need to occur before we get to that point.
Sure, thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you, Rich. Continue to get the word out there too.
Sarah, it's Lisa, a question. For the hiring and the medical cards, do you need any help from us with that? Like what can we do to facilitate?
Um, yeah, I think we're going to talk about that when we added it to the agenda later on in the, in the meeting. Um, so we'll go through that procedure and I'll give you an outline of what I think that process is going to look like.
Okay, good. So I'm agreeing with you. One is top priority is hiring, med cards and and the grants because she's on a, we're on a timeframe with the grants.
And there's a lot of communication with Bill also. That needs to be, that will get us further along with this list.
So do we want to say one in, one in one A, Sarah, you think for med, hiring med cards and grants, one in one A?
Yeah, they can, yeah, that would be fine. They can be kind, be combined as that, as number one, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion here this time with C?
Well, we gotta, we're finishing this, today is the day that we're going to get this all together, right? The goals as far as our priorities. Are we going to keep doing this every week, every other week or?
No, so once you develop these, it is a moving target because things kind of move up and down the list as needed. But essentially, the grant applications and working on the hiring of employees are are the two top priorities. And then moving forward with the the other grant projects that we've already received funding for that need to go out to bid because the construction season is fastly approaching, we need to move forward on them quickly. And that's listed as number 19, but you know, it's really number two.
Right, yeah, we did that.
Yeah.
Um, but like something like-
Which I think you guys outlined last time at the last meeting.
Yes, something like, um, okay, the, the ordinance's town policy review, that should just be an ongoing thing where we're reviewing it, updating it. So I don't, I don't know what the numbers should be for that or priority, but it should be just on everyone's radar as a normal course of business. If we want to set up a little group or something to go over them.
How has that worked in the past, Sarah?
With the town policies?
If, if something arises that brings our attention that something needs to be done immediately because, for example, a statute changed or recommendations from FEMA when we're applying for grant funds that something has to be updated, we address those policies as needed. I've identified it as a project to, to take a look at all of them though. So some of them are in place and do not need review and others, for example, the ordinances have been adopted in the 90s and yeah, they should be reviewed and updated. So nothing, if it's pressing, we handle it. If it's not pressing, it's a lot, it's a longer term project.
So, so do we want to just put like a timeframe where between, say now, just throwing it out there, July 1st or June 1st, all of the ordinances and whatever else needs to be reviewed can be at least looked at by the select board and yourself or whoever else would look at it and make, make their own suggestions within that and then correlate it together at some point?
Um, I think it's an appropriate timeline to prioritize and give updates of where the status is on each one of the policies and ordinances, meaning that you'd have a comprehensive list of them when they were adopted and whether there's been any identification of need for updates. That could occur before July.
Okay, so do we want to lock ourselves into a timeframe for that or just say we'll have it done soon?
I think it's realistic to say that you have a project identification by July and possibly a September goal for updates.
Okay, that sounds good. And that's not left on any one person, right? That's going to be, everybody who's going to jump in on this.
Yeah, they're going to be subject oriented. For example, the lockout, tag out hazardous communication program, personal protective equipment, that would all be handled at the garage level. Social media policy, some of the other policies that regulate the town government, that would be done at the office level.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Does anybody, anything else on here?
And this is not something that we have to review every meeting, but it is something that we review about every quarter to just get a status update and see how things are going.
Okay.
With a reprioritization of the list if need be. I'm happy to report that number 13, Rolston Rest, the, that project was part of the Green Mountain National Forest, taking over land from the Trust for Public Lands and that has been completed. So we get to cross that off the list.
Right.
It's already small.
Yeah, we know. Getting smaller.
Okay, we're ready to move on to D.
Yeah.
Uh, Agency of Transportation Annual Financial Plan.
Okay, I was able to complete that annual financial plan. This is essentially taking our budget that was approved at town meeting and putting it in a form that the agency of trans, or reporting to the agency of transportation that of what we're spending money on as far as maintaining our roads. It's required by VSA or 19 VSA 307 that the town of Mendon spends at minimum of $300 per mile of road on class one, two, and three town highways. I am happy to report that we spend about $67,000 per mile of road in Mendon. So it's slightly outdated, uh, outdated statutes there, but. So essentially what we do is we approve this annual financial plan and it's submitted to the agency of transportation. This is a requirement within 60 days of town meeting and it is also required in this, in order for us to apply for grant funding from the state for highways. Does anyone want an explanation of the income and expenses or you guys are okay with that?
I'm comfortable.
Seth and Lisa, this is the first time you've looked at it, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the first page, that's, well, my first page, it says annual financial plan, plan, town highways. Class one has zero?
Right, we have zero miles of class one roadway in Mendon.
Okay.
And then we have 4.4 miles of class two roadway, that would be Meadow Lake Drive, Park Lane and, and Town Line Road. Going up the Notch Road as well.
Okay.
And then class three are all the rest of the roads that are public roads, not private roads.
Okay.
There are some class four roads in Mendon and legal trails, but they're not, they're not, they don't come with financial support from the state. So the, the, the amount of money associated with them, $19,488.77 and $27,425.91 is sent to us from the state as state aid to highways in our budget.
Okay. And that's based on which amount that you said earlier?
Uh, that, that, those numbers are based on what the legislature puts into the state funds for state aid to highways and that's under VSA, 19 VSA 306A. So we don't have control over that. That's the legislature passing their budget.
Okay.
And telling us what they're going to give us. And then under town tax funds, $571,996.32 that's how much is coming out of the town coffers to maintain our roads. The special funds that we earmarked are our reserve funds that we're going to spend money out of this year. $574,000 for highway improvement, that's, um, um, Journey's End and the Notch Road reclaiming and resurfacing and reconstructing the end of the Notch, of the Journey's End. The bridge and culvert for, the bridge and culvert fund is we have the replacement and upgrade of culverts, three culverts in Wheelerville, which is 0720, 0728, and 0729. Those are three culvert replacement projects. And then we've decided that ARPA is going to pay for $50,000 of our highway improvement this year. So that's where you get the grand total of $1,442,911. So then down below, it breaks down your expenses, your winter expenses and your non-winter expenses. This is again how Vtrans likes us to break it out. So we're spending $418,473 on winter maintenance of our roads and $250,438 on non-winter maintenance of our roads. Major construction projects are listed, which is the Notch Road reclaim and resurface for $339,000. Journey's End, which is the reconstruction and erosion control measures to be installed at the end of Journey's End for 335,000, or I'm sorry, 235,000. And then those culvert replacements that I discussed in Wheelerville, number 2028 and 29, which is approximately 20 or $200,000. These projects will be paid for out of the Highway Improvement and Bridge Fund.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Sarah Hope, thank you.
So at this point, if you all understand and agree, you would make a motion to approve the annual financial plan for fiscal year 24 and you would sign at least one of the copies on the back of, or you know, sign one of the copies that has your signature pages.
Okay.
That will be reviewed by the district administrator and signed and sent back to us.
Any other question?
No, I'm good.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the annual financial plan for fiscal year 2024 as written.
I second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's just.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sure.
Moving on to public comment.
That'd be me.
Hi, Rich.
Good evening, Select Board. My name is Rich Carlson. I'm here tonight representing the East Ridge Acres Homer Association, which consists of 34 families and represents about 15% of the town of Mendon population. Before I do that, I want to commend our two new Select Board members who are stepping up to conduct town business in a time where volunteerism really, well, I don't want to say, be careful with the words, but it really is terrible. You know, and I see that in other organizations that I belong to. So my business tonight, you're Mr. Rich, correct?
Yes, sir.
First name?
Seth.
Seth, okay.
Lisa?
That's Brooks.
What's that?
Brooks.
Okay, and I already know Val. I'm here to talk about a request that I submitted in January of 2022 for ARPA funds for my Homer Association. They ask at that time, and what it is, we're asking for money is to install two generators to keep our, and we're on a community well. One generator will, when the power goes out, we've had it different times for the last six months, four times. It's to continue to pump water and the other generator is to maintain distribution to our homeowners, okay? Without it, we tell people to conserve water when power goes up, but Lisa, guess what? They don't. They think, oh, I'm only going to use a little water. So what happens Seth is when our massive holding tanks get to the end and the power comes on, does anybody have any idea what happens?
No.
Seth?
When the power comes on, it, does it surge and you?
It does, and it surges and Val, there's sediment, it's kind of disgusting, but it's the way it is. There's sediment at the bottom and with water rushing in, they said it, it turns the water brown and that's what we distribute to our homeowners. So when you're doing white laundry, it turns to something other than that. So I submitted a follow-up estimate repairs and really my concern is that since January of 2022 and earlier this year, the, the labor rates and materials Seth have increased almost 50%. And by delaying and I know you've awarded some ARPA money already, but by delaying it, it just increases expenses and we're not getting as much money for that dollar with inflation. So I think why I'm here tonight is I'd like to know the status. I understand money is a lot, but I hope my request is at the top of the file and maybe give me an update on ARPA money overall.
Sure. We do have a list.
Right.
For the town that we are slowly checking off. And as of right now, we are, we've already allocated, we're under 100,000 already.
And you've committed.
We only have, we have less than $100,000 left. And everything that we have allocated to this date has benefited the whole town. You unfortunately are not at the top of the list. I mean, as you could see, the numbers that we were just throwing around with the roads. We would like to keep our ARPA money for, for projects that benefit the town as a whole.
Good.
So.
I understand that.
And just with our roads, I, I honestly want to save a chunk of it for an emergency fund. I don't, it's just my opinion. I don't feel spending all of our ARPA money will benefit Mendon. I think we should save, save some of our money. But like I said, it's, we have, we still have a, a list in front of us before East Ridge Acres, before your concerns. And I, I don't want to leave you hanging. I would say I would not, I would not hope for money, our ARPA funds for East Ridge Acres.
Well, first off, if you read one of the purposes of ARPA funds to begin with, and it says for, and it was pretty strong, for water systems and sewer. And this is about water. And you're giving money away that, you know, this is a core example, I think of, you know, where, why the ask was, you know?
Well, I don't, not to interrupt you, I don't think we're giving money away. What we're doing is using the money.
Okay, wrong word, maybe allocating, granting, distribution?
So the last, the last, one of the last allotments was for the vault upgrades here.
For what?
Vault. That alone was 15.
Yeah, sure.
$15,000. We have, we have a less, you're more than welcome to look at this list. Cybersecurity, air purification, the town office entrance, town garage, storage, we have a generator, we did get the grant for the generator, the garage generator. Did you learn about today? So that's down to 7,000.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I don't even know. How many, how many homes are in this area?
34.
34 homes.
Correct.
Now, question, I don't know how much the generators cost, but it, it's a condo community or a?
No, no, it's single family residential homes.
Okay, but.
It's a community. Community well system. We all get our water from the same source.
So who maintains the community well?
We hire out a company called Simon Operation Services. They test and monitor the water quality. If there's any problems with distribution, whatever, they're there for us.
Okay, and who pays for that currently?
We do. HOA.
Through an association?
Right.
Okay.
Would you like to know how much we spend? Would you like to know how much we spend a year just to maintain our water?
I have a well also.
Well, you have a well. Oh, well.
Yeah, that's it. I have a well, unfortunately, and I face.
Currently, we're strapped, we have two Vito loans we're paying off to maintain our system.
Right.
And, you know, so we're, we spend, another thing is too, we need money for maintaining our fire protection, which, that's a whole other separate thing. But each homeowner, it's in excess of $1,000 a year that they cannot deduct off their taxes, and it is increasing. So, that's why the request for ARPA money came about, and it coincides with water systems and sewer. So. Does anybody else have any other questions? Other than, I'm getting the denial here?
I just, I don't want you to, to expect anything.
Here's one other concern that I have, it sounds like a lot of stuff on your laundry list benefits the town physically of Mendon, you know, a generator and other things. Why aren't those things included in your annual budgeting? You know, that you need certain things. Why are you tapping in and depleting a chunk of ARPA money to do that? That's my question. Seth, what do you think?
Can I just bump in on that a little bit? So I think, I think like the generator that you're, that you're speaking of for the town, for the town garage, I was all for that, because the town garage is considered an emergency site in case of emergency.
Sure.
For the whole town, that's a place to need.
Oh, I understand.
It's a place to take care of, and currently, they were running off of, you know, a plug-in gas generator that can only run a certain period of time. To answer your question on the other end, Rich, I think these things just maybe haven't been addressed previously, so now that we have the opportunity to do it, things like that are put first and foremost, because as Val says, it affects the whole town as a whole. You know, it's not just one community. Not to say that that, I mean, I know your situation very well in East Ridge Acres, and, and I'm, you know, I feel for you on that situation. I guess we just have a certain amount to work with, and I also agree heavily with Val on, we have to look at things that affect the whole town overall.
But you really, well, you kind of answered my question, why are all the things, you know, like the town has, why aren't they included in budget, you know, forecasting, this is what we're going to need, generator, we're going to need this, this, and this? I mean, that's what I would do.
Yeah.
Sarah, correct me if I say this incorrectly, that our reserve funds are used throughout the year, and what we have in front of us is a list that we actually put together that has not been, it's not part of that calculation for the reserve funds, it's, it's different. We, we will still use the reserve fund money, is that right, Sarah? And these are outside of that fund?
Yeah, essentially, what we're trying to do with the ARPA funds right now, with the list that has been approved, is that we're leveraging the ARPA funds while we're applying for grants. So I'm going to use the town office generator project as an example. We budgeted, you know, this, that, we were budgeting for this project in the town office, not the town office, the Public Safety Reserve Fund. So the town office will serve as the local emergency operations center in the event of an emergency. So it didn't have backup power. We, if we lost power at the town office, we would have to go down to the town garage, and it doesn't have the administrative capabilities that the town office does. So, we had been budgeting that in the reserve fund to undertake that project at $7,500. When we went out to bid after we received the ARPA funds, with inflation and the cost of projects going up, that escalated the project cost to over $15,000. So, we went out and looked for grant opportunities that we could use ARPA funds and use, and leverage that money in order to try to get state grant funds. So, the, the ARPA funds will pay for a part of the project, the, the reserve funds for the town of Mendon will pay for part of the project, and will also receive some grant funding. So.
I'm sorry, sir, I mean, I thought you were done.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I don't want to take up any more oxygen in the room. When I was asked to get an updated estimate of our cost, Seth, if that were you in that position, it would almost give me the opinion that maybe I was a contender for some of that money. And to come here to the meeting tonight and the door closed, maybe you could have let maybe another people that are not in the mix to get money, let them know, rather than keep holding up. The other things, and a quick thing, is fire protection, dry hydrants. My neighborhood, our two dry hydrants are about to shut down. The sad part about it, when I got an email from Troy Dare, who is the director of the Vermont Rural Dry Hydrant Program, said, in order to get grant money, listen to this, your system has to fail. Now, who the hell wants to live in a neighborhood where you don't have any access to water in the, in the event of a fire? A fire? That's not right. That's a wrong priority. I'm a proactive person, and I would like to see that we proactively, when there is a problem down the horizon, we address it now, before it becomes a problem. I'm done.
Were they tested last year, your dry hydrants?
Yeah, and they were failed, according to Chief.
Lovett?
Yep.
Okay, well, I, I.
So they're going to, you know, pretty soon, our pond pipes are going to pump out mud in a hole in time. Or, they're going to have to rely upon water sources from beyond the area, and that's a compromising situation, because time is of the essence in responding. And that's it. Other questions? That's just food for thought, but you need to really visit, you know, respond when there's a problem.
Sir, are you aware of any of the?
Sure she is.
People we speak, can speak with as far as with the state like Troy Dare on this?
Yep, so, everything that Rich is saying is correct as far as the grant funding through the Fire Protection Task Force. They don't provide dredging of ponds unless the system has failed. They, I don't agree with the fact that those dry hydrants have failed. They're tested annually, and I believe the lower pond did have an appropriate amount of water lift from it. The upper pond was, the chief really said that he wouldn't hook up to the upper pond because of its location. He would use the lower pond. There, we did have a few failures as far as, Woodard Road wasn't tested because it's due to be replaced this summer, and the one on Journey's End was, it had a floating, a floating pipe that needed to be repaired. And then the one at Cortina, the, or Vista View, that was replaced just a few years ago, was, the pond was compromised and was really low, but that has refilled, and so that one should be operational now. So this all requires maintenance, the Rutland City Fire Department does test them annually, but we hadn't received a report in the past, but we have requested that we receive, the select board receives a report annually. And this is something that was facilitated through Lee, Lee Mee Carter as our Director of Emergency Management.
That is something that I've been monitoring every year, and the time is nearing where that access to that water is going to fail. And Mike Ria has been in insurance, but my point is that if you don't have a reliable, safe source of water, rating companies could reduce our rating in terms of our cost of our home insurance. We get the benefit of Rutland City rates, because we're within five miles, but if there's no water, or it's declining, that's a real problem. But I came in to talk about the ARPA funds, so.
Okay.
I'm done. Thank you.
So thank you, Rich.
Thank you for the information.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your time, and I do appreciate it.
You got it.
And thank you for being on the Select Board.
You got it, Rich. Thank you, take care.
Good night, everyone.
Okay.
Night, Rich. Number six, business.
Do we have any further public comment?
No. No, forget it.
Six A, appointment of offices.
So you appointed most of the offices at the last select board meeting, there was a question whether or not Larry Corcel needed to be appointed to the OCCUD, which is the Otter Creek Communication Union District. He had served on that committee as a select board member and wanted to continue as, after he came off the board. In looking up that information, he was originally appointed until 2025, so I do not think there's a need to reappoint him to that, but there was a form that came to the town office that we have to send in stating that he has been appointed. So, I will do that and have Val sign that form. But other than that, I think all of the appointed offices were made at the last meeting.
Okay.
Okay, select board training, letter B.
And this will be ongoing with our two new board members, two brand-new board members. So, you know, I apologize for missing the last meeting, but I did want, I reviewed what was taped and wanted to go over a couple things with you, starting with the rules of procedure. It was suggested by Justin Lynn Home at the last meeting that we limit public comment to two minutes. And then looking at our select board rules of procedure, that should be a familiar document to you, because we adopted it right after town meeting, but you can go back and review it. We have participation on there that at each meeting, there will be a 15 minutes afforded to open public comment. By majority vote, the select board may increase the time for open public comment and may adjust the agenda items and times accordingly. We, at conclusion of the discussion of each item, but before any action is taken, public body at each meeting, they, there may be five minutes afforded for public comment. So it doesn't really say in number two, how many minutes each person has, like what Justin said. So I think you could expand on the wording of number two, that there'll be 15 minutes afforded to open public comment with some wording that says, each person will have an opportunity to speak to for up to two minutes, and in order to just manage the public comments.
And what about if they need more time, like the gentleman before needed more time, should we suggest that they submitted prior, because they know they're going to speak over two minutes, in writing, so that we can expedite it, or, or just tell them after the two minutes, we may, we may afford them more time?
I think we could have similar wording as in number three, which is, you know, it, if you have a hot issue and there's six or seven people that want to comment, you're going to have to be pretty strict with the two-minute limit. For example, Rich Carlson, if he's alone in his public comments, you can afford him additional time, because he was the only one there to make public comment.
So I have to discretion.
And I think when you have a limit, you change, yeah, you just get to the point.
So, do we do that tonight? We make the wording?
No, so I'm going to work on the wording of that. This, the select board rules of procedure was modeled after a VLCT policy, so I'm going to go back and ask VLCT what, you know, what they suggest there, whatever's reasonable.
Okay.
So I just wanted to highlight that and kind of explain the rules of procedure for the select board meetings again. The second thing I wanted to go over was the procurement policy. There was some, also some questions regarding, what do we have for a purchasing policy and conflict of interest policy? In 2021, it was re, it was, the policy was adopted as a town of Mendon purchasing and conflict of interest policy. The purpose of this replaced the procurement policy, which was a standalone policy adopted in 2019, I think, and the conflict of interest policy that was adopted in 2016. So, how this all came about was, we were, we were applying for FEMA funds for the April flooding event, and they told us we needed to update our purchasing and conflict of interest policy. So the one in, that one that we adopted was a FEMA-approved federal policy. And so, there's two things that I wanted to bring to the attention. At the last meeting, we had a select board member abstain from the vote because of a conflict of interest. And that was done appropriately, because the bidder was related to one of the board members, that board member abstained from the vote. That was done appropriately. So any, so what, what you could do is, at the beginning of the year, and this is, I learned this from the Barstow Unified Union School District and their conflict of interest policy, is at the beginning of the year, you can state any conflict of interest that you may have. So, you know, if you had a relationship with a particular vendor, you would state that upfront, and then it wouldn't be a question. And then you would abstain from the discussion and the vote. Do you have any questions about that, or I can, you know, the code of conduct in the policy is very clear and spelt out and is approved by the federal government.
I have no questions.
So that's that. The other thing that I wanted to talk to you about is the, is the purchasing guidelines, and where we go out to public bid, there was a question about a sealed bid process versus receiving quotes. So when the town of Mendon is looking for a vendor for a project, we will solicit bids from qualified vendors. If the project is over $250,000, we're required to do a sealed bid process. All of our bids are, all of our larger projects are posted on the Vermont. All of our bids are, all of our larger projects are posted on the Vermont Bid Board. And that is an approved source for going out to public bid, according to FEMA. So these are all guidelines that we are following with FEMA. The state also, I mean, it's a state bid board, so, you know, the state uses that for their bids as well. We have three different types of purchases in Mendon. There's an incidental purchase, which is purchases made up to $1,500 can be made without prior approval. These purchases are essentially when we create a budget and we tell Bill he can go spend X number of dollars on repairs and supplies. He doesn't have to come back to you and ask you for permission to go spend $200. You do sign off on the orders, though, before the check is submitted. Minor purchases are between $1,501 and $30,000. So these can only be spent with prior approval of the Select Board and is limited to the amount of the budget authorized by the town. So although not required, competitive quotes from at least two vendors should be obtained. That is the majority of our purchases, between $1,501 and $30,000. Major purchases over $30,000 require prior approval from the Select Board and require those two bids be submitted and evaluated by the Select Board and motion made by the Select Board to approve those purchases. And that goes up from $30,000 up to $249,999. Anything over $250,000 has to go to sealed bid. So I just wanted to clarify those again. That purchasing policy and conflict of interest policy is not adopted annually, but it is reviewed at the organizational meeting. And based on some subjects that the board had been discussing, I thought it was good to just go over them again.
Good.
Do you have any questions about that?
I do not.
No, no.
Okay. The third document. Yep. The third document that I just wanted to go over was the Town of Mendon Public Record Inspection, Copying, and Transmission Policy. This is how to handle public information requests. We have a policy that was adopted in July of 2021. Again, this is a model policy from VLCT, and it spells out how individuals should request public information or their rights to make copies of public information and public documents. We ask that the requests be submitted in writing, and we have a form also with this policy on how to respond to the public information request. So I encourage you all to take a look at this and be aware of it, and then you can make sure that all of our departments are following the requests for public information.
Thank you.
And all of these policies are posted on our website under Documents and then Policies.
And there's actually a form for the public to fill out? Request for inspection of public records? Is that the form that the public would fill out?
Yes, that, yes.
And that's available at the front desk or they can get it online or something?
It's available at the town office. It's also available online.
So it is accessible?
Any questions?
So that's it for right now as far as the training. But again, remember just to reach out to me if you have any questions about our policies or what to do about this, that, or the other. Because I'll look up the information and get it to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, under Business, letter C, Agency of Transportation Structures Grant, Class II Roadway Grants Applications due.
Okay, so these grant applications are due on Friday. We will be applying for reclaiming and resurfacing the Knott's Road as well as the replacement of Culverts 20 and 28 in, on Wheelerville. So we need a motion to apply for the grants and have Val sign the grant application to submit on Friday. And if you have any questions about the projects, let me know.
Do you need any specific details as far as the Culvert numbers included in the motion?
No, you can just move to apply for the Class II Roadway Program and the Structures Program grant and just have the other board members approve that you can sign the application.
Okay. I'll make a motion to apply for the AOT Structures Grant and Class II Roadway Grants. Due this Friday. Except, except.
Good, very good.
Call of favor.
Aye.
Okay. Letter D, we added conversation about the bidding, the projects that will be out to bid and who will be the best to do that.
Right. So as you know, we have a project of installation, you know, purchasing and installation of the playground equipment at the recreation area. Again, the budget is a little up in the air right now because the committee has received a few quotes in the $50,000 range. And time is kind of of the essence if we want to get this project done this summer. Which is ARPA funds. So we do want to move expeditiously through some of the projects that we've already decided on so we know whether or not they're going over budget, within budget, you know, if they have to come back and ask for additional ARPA funds, that we have that all settled. Or maybe they come in under budget and they don't need the ARPA funds that we've set aside to get that initial wave of projects underway and completed this construction season. Again, you have to obligate and tell, you have to obligate those funds by the end of 2024. So we have time, but it's, you know, the construction seasons are short. So where we stand with this is we have applied for a grant through AARP again for $15,000 to purchase some of the equipment that would be accompanying the base playground structure. And that accessory equipment is geared towards all-age adults and children as well as benches and message boards in order to create more of a sense of place and be able to provide information at the recreation area. So if we receive that grant, it is $15,000 that would affect the overall budget of the playground on what needs to be spent out of ARPA funds or our recreation fund. So where we stand now is we have to make a, you know, we have to have the Recreation Committee present to you the quotes, the Select Board, and the Select Board accept a quote. And then we need to determine who's going to manage the project. So I would be facilitating the, making sure we follow the bid process and making sure that we enter contracts correctly with the town. But then we need a clerk of the works that's going to actually manage the installation of the project. So would that be a member of the Recreation Committee? Would that be a member of the Select Board? You know, who would that be? And looking at this summer, it's not going to be the road crew.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry if I haven't understood 100%. The AARP, $15,000, the grant that we applied for, we have not heard.
No, we have not heard from them yet. So.
That is not in the chat channel?
No, and that would affect probably scaling back on the project slightly. We kind of designed it that we could order the main structure. And Lisa, you do know more than even I do on that particular part of it. But so pipe in if you want to add any additional detail. But the initial structure is within, and installation is within the $50,000 budget that we have right now.
It might be like $1,000 over, but, you know, very tight.
We're very close. We're very close.
And the $15,000 is in addition to, not the ARPA money, it's addition to. Putting this at 60. Now, question. If the bids for the ARPA money are under the $50,000, we do not need to get? Do we need a sealed bid or anything like that?
No. No, so it's under the $250,000, so you don't need sealed bids. You need to at least have two qualified contractors, which I believe the Rec Committee does have two qualified contractors bidding on a playground structure installed.
Yes. All right, and if it's over the 50, they need three qualified bidders?
No, if it's over $250,000, it needs to go to a sealed bid process. So as far as major purchases go, which is over $30,000, so we do have a project that's over 30. The Select Board shall ensure that we're at least, we don't need to have, we don't need to have sealed bids.
Okay. Okay. So there already is two vendors bidding on?
Yeah, we have two vendors that have given us quotes for playground equipment. You know, of course, the pieces of equipment are slightly different because it's what they, it's what they offer.
Right.
So the setup of the, it's the similar size, but they're all a little different.
Okay.
No. Can I show? Can I pass these documents out? Or I'm not, you know, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, that's fine.
I can explain them and everything, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. There were two vendors. This vendor provided whatever's on this list. I don't have a photo of his, any of their photos, but we have photos of it. And the total was up here, and then this is their scope of project, what they would give us.
Okay.
And then this vendor gave two bids for two different but similar pieces of equipment. One is under 50, one is just slightly over, and that one is at 50 and change.
That's the same vendor, but two different?
These are two same vendor, two different pieces of equipment.
Okay.
But very similar.
And then there was a number of companies that did not provide a bid.
Right. I had one company from Connecticut. They couldn't do a bid. So, and then some other companies that didn't reach in calls and stuff. Now, the installation timeframe, this company, I believe, is within a month. They can.
Wow, that was my next question.
They can deliver it.
This company?
Yeah, and install it. They come in with a truck and all the equipment and install it with their own crew. The other vendor, I believe we would have to get volunteers for, and I.
This one shows installation. It's $6,000 for installation.
Okay, then maybe they changed that to put installation in it.
So this one.
Their installation, they have installation also. I think it's up in the stock somewhere, maybe, now?
Yeah. You have to install, wow, installations. $4,000 more for installation.
Yeah.
What, they come out to the same? It's all incredible numbers.
Does that one have mulch on it? The mulching and stuff?
Wood fiber, this one does.
Yes, the boss has wood fiber. Does the other one have wood fiber? I think that's what we would have to purchase on top of it. There were some other items that would have to be purchased on top.
Yeah.
And I thought, we have to check with the Rec Committee for sure, but I thought that one had the installation, the Miracle. The installation was going to be volunteered with an oversight of someone from the company? And this site, the boss does all the prep work. Does Miracle do the prep work also?
This does not say anything about.
I mean, the prices are really comparable if you're getting full.
But if you're not, like Lisa's saying, if there isn't prep work, because there's probably prep work involved, I would assume if there isn't prep work in here, so that, and there is no mulch in this one either.
Right.
So that we would have to add on. There's around a price of $3,100 for that bark mulch. So we'd have to add that in, add this number. So I would assume that would put this company at the highest.
Right, and also I checked the warranties. I don't have that big book here, but the warranties were all within the same 25-year standard. Not warranty for like screws and bolts, but product warranty. They were very comparable in both of the warranties for those. But I'm sure the Recreation Committee could give more information on that.
Okay. That's good.
The type of information in order for the Select Board to make a decision is to compare apples to apples as far as the quote. So if one includes installation and the other one doesn't, we would note that so that it could be clearly compared to make sure that, you know, what you're making a decision on and what the end product is going to be. But so the committee needs direction from the Select Board at this point on who's going to manage the project.
Is that anything?
I'm on the Recreation Committee. So is there a conflict if I am a Select Board member and on managing it from the Recreation end? Or do I, you know, is there any issues?
I would think that would be actually better.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that's a conflict.
Okay, then I can manage it. But we'll talk more, Sarah, about, want me to manage it?
Yeah. Yeah, we will, we will talk more about the procedures that need to be met prior to entering into contracts and make sure that we're all on the same page. But so if we could get this done before the next meeting so that we can move forward quickly, that would be a benefit.
Okay, and be specific in what you need me to do between the next meeting so I can write it down.
Yep, so we want to review the bids that have been received so far and make sure we're comparing apples to apples. So some bids might include that. So some bids might include that installation, some might require, you know, some we might have to purchase the wood products for underneath. One might include it, so we just have to make a comparison so we know what, what the bids are providing for a scope of work.
Okay.
It's not a problem for the town to go out and buy material to put under the structures after the fact, but that would be an increased cost. So how much would that cost to bring in?
Right.
Um, so that you could compare the two quotes.
Okay, and. I'll bring that back to the next board meeting.
Yeah, we can discuss it ahead of time if you'd like.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
We can go over it ahead of time.
Okay.
And so in the middle of this discussion, are we done discussing this recreation project? In the middle of this, I noticed that Carol had her hand raised, and I don't know if that was from the previous conversation or this conversation. But, um, Carol, do you have a public comment regarding recreation?
So it's me, Sarah Bryan, and I actually had my hand up for the last half hour since public, uh, public comment the first time. You ignored me the whole time, just to let you know.
Well, I didn't ignore you.
And we're talking about bids. How come we didn't talk about the bid, uh, two weeks ago? That when you hired Val's husband, we didn't go over that bid too, too much between the three to see if we were doing apples to apples, did we? We just voted on it real quick, didn't we, uh, Seth?
No, no, we, we, we looked at.
No, you didn't, you didn't do any apples to apples, I was there for that meeting. So I'd like to see those, I'd like to see those three bids. To see if they were apples to apples, like you're talking about this one. Kind of ironic, isn't it? And, and, uh, and Val did not, and Val did not recuse herself before, like she was supposed to. She recused herself after.
She didn't make a decision on the bids, right?
No, that was in, uh, actually you did that in executive session, because you put the recording on, we recorded executive session last two, two weeks ago.
You didn't make any decisions in executive session.
Oh, you didn't recu, you didn't recuse yourself before the bids. You, none of, none of the.
Brian, do you have a question on any of the agenda today?
None of the Select Board went over the three bids to see if they were all the same, like you're just talking about this playground thing. It's kind of odd to me.
Do you have any questions regarding the agenda today?
Yeah, the personal gains that you're going to make for your family for getting a job for your husband.
So that's.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
You corrupt, you're so corrupt, all three of yous. Is that your friend you're going to hire for the, for the, uh, for the playground job, Lisa? Because I remember you were talking about, you were talking about that a couple of meetings ago. How you had a friend that was, that was going to do the playground.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Okay. You're more than happy to contact the two companies and ask them what my relationship with either company is?
No problem.
Because I have no relationship with either company, I Googled them on the internet and found them.
Sounds good, at least you didn't have your husband do it.
Listen, we're, we're, I don't know where we're going with this at this point, we want to get through the agenda.
Well, you didn't know, you didn't know that that was her husband two weeks ago, did you? That that was Val's husband that you were hiring?
No, I did not, I told you that.
That's a conflict of interest.
Brian, we're sticking to the agenda today and we're moving on.
Okay.
I figured that. It's the same thing every day.
Business, letter E, conversation about the hiring committee.
Okay.
All right.
To assist us with, um, our road crew.
Um, okay, so, um, I've outlined the hiring process. Um, and needs, um, we need to create the hiring committee. So I'm just going to start with the things that need to be done as we, um, as we move through this process. And the question right off the bat is whether to hire a consulting company to walk us through the hiring process. Um, because it's not something that we do every day. Um, and we're hiring for three positions. So we do have job descriptions, um, that are fairly updated. But because Bill has been in the job for 40 years, it's, we need to look at them and see if there's any differences in the job description for the road commissioner specifically that we would put in that job description. Um, we need to do a budget determination to see, um, if we're, I mean, the first question that applicants are going to ask is what the salary range is going to be. Um, we need to create an interview committee, and I would recommend that, um, Bill as the, as the road commissioner, myself, and a Select Board member be on the interview committee. And I just recently learned that Lisa has a CDL license, so I was, um, that was a surprise skill, Lisa. But I thought that you might be a good, um, fit for the interview committee, knowing that, um, Seth is going to abstain from that discussion. Um, as a potential interviewer, so, um. Applications. Yep, go ahead.
I don't have a problem being on the committee.
Okay. Um, applications, so, uh, there are two employment applications with Mendon. One is required if you don't have a CDL, and the other one is required for a CDL. Um, those, that CDL application is a federal requirement to follow a certain process as you hire CDL drivers. Um, we've discussed a medical card policy, which we have not had a medical card policy in the past. So that would need to be developed, um, prior to, um, hiring any of these three positions. Um, we do have, um, pre-employment requirements as far as our, our pre-employment drug testing and, um, uh, background checks as far as clean licenses and what, whatnot, as far as that goes. Um, that's something that we've done routinely, and, um, I, I don't know if you guys are aware that we are in a random, um, drug testing pool with, um, that's through our insurance company and, uh, that helps facilitate that program. And DISA, D-I-S-A is the company that does that, and it's a, a quarterly random selection of our employee list. Um, they might be called up three times a year, they might not be called up at all during the year, so it truly is random. And the pool is everybody in the, um, VLCT insurance. That's the pool that they draw from. Um, then we would go, I'm sorry.
No, I said, okay.
Okay, um, then we would go through an outline of interviews and create the interview questions so that you are asking the same questions to each applicant. Um, and you don't vary from, from that outline. And then we have an outline of how we're going to make a decision. So the committee would rank the candidates and then make a recommendation to the Select Board. So because this is the number one priority, I just, we need to move forward with, um, you know, checking off some of these boxes in order to prepare for that outline, or, you know, prepare this outline to start going through it.
So discussing hiring of, of any job firm or a, um, what was that called?
Um, you know, like Indeed or something like that.
So we, I guess we have at least.
A firm?
Um, I want to look. So I did hear back, um. From Al Wakefield.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Can I just read you his? He's retired. Yeah, he's retired, um. And he said he has a former partner in New York, but she works only on, um, searches which pay a base salary of 150,000. Um, so we, he's going to try and think of other alternatives in Vermont. With maybe connections that are people that he may know.
So this is a.
That's a search. Um, yeah, what is his occupation?
So, uh, I think his company was Global Solutions, but don't quote me on that. But Al Wakefield is a resident of Mendon that, uh, we knew was a headhunter. Um, and had a company, uh, but, and he happens to live on Cream Hill Road. So I asked Val to reach out to, or Val offered to reach out to him to see if he could give us some guidance on, um, on that side of things. We weren't sure whether that was something that he had expertise in or, um, if he had connections with another company that could guide the town through that process.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, other resources for the town is the Vermont Local Roads and organization and, uh, VLCT. Um, and we can, you know, confer with an attorney.
And are we interested in, um. Using a. Using Indeed?
For advertisement, yeah. Yep.
Okay, so they don't actually do it for you? That's just advertising stuff there?
Yeah, that's just advertising and reach out. And then we also have, you know, this is just to make sure that we're following, um, equal opportunity laws and, um, publishing it in a way that's necessary to, um, make sure that we're informing. Um. We're just following the employment guidelines.
Right.
I don't want to say anything, I know enough to get me in trouble.
So what about. The VLCT, do they offer this service? Do they have this service within them that we can go to them and say, this is where we're at, what should we be doing? What should our forms look like and paperwork look like?
Yeah, I know they do it on the town manager level, but I don't know if they do it on, um, uh, on the highway department. So we can reach out to them and find out.
Do you want to reach out, or do you want me to reach out to them? I'll try tomorrow, I can try tomorrow to reach out to them, because.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, yeah, that's fine.
And, and what about.
We do have their updated paperwork as far as a CDL, um, a checklist of what you have to do for CDL drivers.
Okay, what about looking neighboring town and asking them what their hiring practice for this type of position was or a similar position? What, what did they, what were their requirements?
So the town of Rutland just went through this process. What did you say, Seth? Rutland Town.
Same, you just said, same thing you just said.
Yeah, yeah, Rutland Town just went through this process, so that would be a good resource. Um, the town of West Rutland also has, um, a town manager that is, um, would probably be willing to share information. Um, and then VLCT and, and Vermont Local Roads would also be two other sources.
Who would I contact for the Rutland Town? I could do that.
Rutland Town, so their new road commissioner is Dave Sears.
Okay.
I'm not sure who did the hiring process, I don't know.
But I, yeah. Um. Bill Sweet is their town or their administrative assistant over there, so he might be able to shed some light on that process.
Okay. All right, as far as the medical card policy, do, could we just contact, um?
So that I would contact our insurance company, so Wade Macher might be able to provide us with the guidance on what we need to do to complete that.
Hey, do you have that, you'll send, if you send me that information, I can call and ask about that.
Okay. Yeah, so. Yeah.
So are you trying to, um, so have you chosen some, have you chosen anybody to be on the interview board or be part of that? I mean, I know we mentioned Lisa, is there?
Yeah, so I would recommend, I mean, it's up to the Select Board, but I would recommend that Bill be on the interview committee, myself and a Select Board member.
Now, how does that work with myself being refused or?
So I think.
Here, I know I, I will be on that board, but do we?
Yeah.
Do I get involved with making a motion for that, or should I just?
Yeah, you should just recuse yourself from the discussion.
Okay.
You know, um, certainly be aware of all of it and the process that we're following. Um, yeah, but as far as making motions and decisions, you should recuse yourself, because we wouldn't want you to jeopardize any. I mean, that's a good role that you should apply for.
Okay. Okay. Got you.
And what, what's our timeframe? Um, everything back by the next board meeting, but correlated to you first?
Yeah, so that we can identify if there's any other action, um, action that we need to take before the next Select Board meeting. Um. It, and the only thing that I see might be a Select Board action is if we hire, if we go to a consulting company to assist us in hiring. If there's a cost associated with that, you would need to, um, approve that expenditure. But other than that, we, we don't need Select Board approval to start this process. The medical card policy will need to be approved by the Select Board.
Okay, so do we want to try to get this wrapped up and have a, within the next three weeks or four weeks, so by the, by the 8th of May? That's.
I mean, yeah, we want to move through it as quickly as possible. Um, yeah. We want to move forward as quickly as possible.
Figure this, we, we, we're talking about only three more days left in this week, so.
Yeah.
We'll make phone calls and everything, hopefully get everything sent to you.
Mm-hmm.
When we find out, and then.
Yeah.
Just start working on the job descriptions, shaping them up. Hopefully have them back by the next board meeting or midweek of the next week, and then.
Yeah, and the Select Board will need to direct Bill to participate in this process if he's willing to.
And that's, that's the whole process as far as sitting on the committee and help writing the.
Job descriptions.
Job descriptions and.
Interview questions. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to reach out to Rutland Town and. I will also, um, reach out to the town manager.
And which is Mary Ann Goulet. Mary Ann is in West Rutland.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll do the VLTC and the insurance company.
A lot of vehicles in towns. Yep.
Right, as far as hiring somebody, a company, an organization, a company, um. I wonder, I wonder if there's a, yeah, um, who, who's going to be working on that to try to find that? Is that part of what you're doing? I know I'm.
Yeah, you're going to. Yeah, you're going to ask VLCT if they have those services, one, and if they don't, then do they have recommendations of?
Okay.
Who can assist us? Um, our insurance company is going to want to make sure that we do it correctly, so they should have some sort of referrals.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Any other ideas or comments, Sarah?
Well, I just, I think you guys could make a decision about the Hiring Committee at this point. Where, you know, what you're, you're going with, so that we can move forward with that.
So, will you just? You need an approval of the committee?
Yeah, I just want the Select Board to approve that the three members would be starting to work on interview questions and that type of stuff. As long as we're not hiring a company to assist us, but if we have to do it, then, you know, we need to start moving forward with that.
Right.
Between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, unless, I, I think we need to, I think we just need to get started in whatever we learn along the way from the neighboring towns or VLCT, then we can go from there. But I would start with the committee, just getting ideas and putting heads together.
Do we have to make a motion for that?
Sarah, you want a motion for the specific people?
Um, it can't hurt, yeah.
I'll make a motion to, um, have Sarah, Lisa, and Bill be on the, um, Hiring Committee for the road crew.
I can second that?
Yes.
Okay, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, Seth, you're abstaining, right?
Yes, I'm abstaining.
Can I make a motion? To adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
At seven ten?
I like that.
That, I can second.
All in favor, yes?
Aye.
Thank you.